Good evening, I would like to call the June sixth twenty twenty four Wall City Council meeting to orders. And Carolyn, would you please read roll call?
Hoffman.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Stan Anderson.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Huh? Mike Anderson? Would you have a call?
Okay, thank you. Let us stand and say the pleasure. And Sergeant Swanson, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. Patient, under God, in this hope, we live with each other forever.
Thank you. Carolyn, do we have any order of business for emergencies?
No.
Do we have attendance on Zoom?
No.
So that brings us to the police report. Welcome Sergeant Swanson.
Hi, how are you guys doing?
Good.
Okay, so looking over this report, we are actually up quite a bit of hours. I I hope you guys got the new report. Uh, the report I sent out earlier, there was a mistake on the number, so I apologize for that. Um, we do have a a little bit more animal complaints uh this month. And then we know we do have a lot more extra patrols and it looks like you guys know the comples that we have or we need placings. Other than that, it looks like everything is all else is about where it needs to be. Does anybody have any questions?
What is like the extra patrol?
So we have like different things like breakdown. So like if we go into like specific businesses and we're just doing extra patrols. It's like an extra presence there and we're not talking to people. That's what we call an extra patrol. Now let's say I walk into your business and you and it was chit chatting. That's called a community placing stat. So it's just to give like different stats for like the different areas, so.
Well, well, we'll figure it out with the D O T shop.
D O T shop, probably community placing and they're chatting.
A month ago.
Yeah.
Um, done. Have we continued to update Pennington County Housing on visits and um observations at Crowe Village?
Yes, I was talking to Becky a couple of weeks ago. We actually have a lot less calls over there recently, which is really good. We have a lot more civil paperwork, which means that things are kind of breaking off. Um, I haven't noticed any calls over there lately, but as far as communication, it's been pretty ongoing, um, which I'm very appreciative of. Whenever they have any complaints, they call me up right away and ask for a call for service number. I'm going right away to get the um, the reports and everything, which is a lot faster than they do in Rapid. Um, and then they are already a victim of somebody else right now, so which is good because I don't even lose there right now.
Okay, so, okay, and when you say they call for service, who's calling? The residents or the Penn, someone from Pennington County Housing?
I'm sorry, so Pennington County Housing, whenever they hear law enforcement over there, because they do monitor their videos often. They'll just give us a call and say, hey, we need the call for service number. And we'll tell them, hey, it was a disturbance or it was whatever it was, and they get their report right away. We give them a lot more information than what the city does, but then they use that for what they need, whether it's like evictions or because they have a certain steps of what they have to do for their eviction problems or whatever, so.
Okay.
And there was a call here, it was last weekend. It took like twenty minutes and then um, um, law enforcement from the Badlands came out. And then later on, the county and Highway Patrol came as like thirty to forty minutes later. Um, is that usually what a response time will be for that?
So for deputies, so we have deputies here. Um, it just depends on the night, so at the time that was.
Well, see, it was Sunday. I got a phone call from one of the residents across the street and said there there was a disturbance and they or they were calling for an assault or something. Then he was just saying, I don't want this to be very long, get there in a point one shot.
Yeah, I I guess I can't, I don't know without like looking at it, but um, you know, it just depends. Like a deputy could have been on traffic stop and then, you know, but we do have three deputies here now. We have two more coming in October. Um, well, one will be leaving, we have two more starting in October.
And by that, you mean they're gonna be living locally?
One for sure. The other ones, we're struggling, he's struggling to find a place, but we're hoping to get him a place here locally, but yeah. They're they're, they all should be here. Kristofferson, Montgomery, McSherry, and we have Deputy Austin here. And then Cordell will be going back to Rapid as soon.
So I did get a call from a resident this morning, and so I'll just let you speak to that because I told him I would comment on it tonight at the meeting. So he had concern of a motor home that was parked on the main street in front of the clinic and their generator was running. He said he called law enforcement about eight o'clock at night and then was called back by law enforcement around ten thirty and told they were not able to get in touch with anyone from the motor home. The resident said the generator ran all night disrupting sleep and asked about vehicles camping overnight on city property. So.
I know when I talked to Deputy Austin about that, he's gonna do some follow up today, but I think he said a citation was issued. I don't know what the citation was for that.
Okay. I guess that I would comment about it during the report, so. Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any conflict of interests that need to be declared at this time? Seeing none. Um, attached in the packet was the minutes from the May twenty first uh city council meeting. Do I have a, I assume you reviewed those. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, that moved. Stan seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, item number nine then is the claims for this evening. We have the city of bills attached. And we have bills from the fire department. Bills from the, or claims from the library. And the cemetery. Would I have a motion to approve the claims for the city of Wall Fire Department, Library and Cemetery?
Will Joe approve?
Rick has moved.
Who seconded?
Jerry has seconded. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Also in the packet for you to review were the on-call schedule and the employee overtime sick and vacation report. As well as the golf uh balance sheet. Also included are the ambulance financials, and these are as of April thirtieth, so that would be through their last meeting. The sales tax report. It's a little surprising to me. And I'm interested that the the BBB tax seems to come in higher than the sales tax. I'm not sure. I someday I need to, does anyone have a good explanation? Because we do have a lot of people in town.
Yeah. BBB tax is up. This is actually B for the month of says May, I'm not sure it's April, but because May sales tax isn't even yet so B for April.
April was like really strong for us, we were like up fifteen percent over last year, which
yeah, but chose showed down.
But I don't know, it's down a little bit from last year.
Yeah. So I was just trying to figure out why BB goes up, is up higher than what you would think they would run somewhere, but anyway, so we'll just see, like you said, through April, but boy, it just seems like our town is really busy. The people are coming, not hopefully they're spending when they come.
It seems really busy, Mary, because half the streets are closed.
Okay, let's look at the expense budget. It's also enclosed. And those expenses are up to, no. Well, yeah, anyway. With inflation, et cetera, yes, uh, but anyway, enclosed for your review, is there any questions about the expense? And this is through the month of?
Through this meeting.
Yeah, to this meeting, as of this meeting. I was gonna say, can't be June, June's not over. What happened to this? Okay. Through June. So any questions or concerns on any of those uh reports? Golf ambulance sales budget. And then also included in the review process is a billing permit for Mike Jaeger for a storage shed at three twelve Kelly Avenue, a beautiful new home in the Hanson subdivision, and you clarity cleared that, correct?
Yes.
All right, they are, they're busy doing wonderful landscaping and everything. Okay, so that takes us through items number ten. That brings us to item eleven. Which would be a agenda request from Jim Coats. Thank you for being here, and we're sorry you missed it last time, but we understand it was kindergarten.
Right.
Graduation. So congratulations to you on
Yeah.
graduation.
Thank you. So, what I'm curious about is with this November recreational marijuana vote coming up. If that passes, I've got a great interest in doing something on Main Street, and they wanted to see if a variance would be able to be applied on Main Street for a recreational marijuana place if the vote goes through. And then another thing they also wanted to know about medical marijuana licenses available in town. If there's any available still or what's what's going on with that?
So with the recreational, I'd say we have to wait for the vote to come before we can probably say anything on that.
Well, so they want to design a building and have it ready to go. So instead of waiting, you know, to to draw plans for a building, if that plan's up ready, you know what I'm saying, they start months ahead of time.
Yeah, I wish I could see into the future too, but I can't, so for it still being illegal, I'd say for a recreational one, we wouldn't be able to do anything on it as of now. But for like a variance and you're thinking like a, if you're speaking medical, um, I think the council needs to look at that zone. Because in state law for the medical canvas dispensary, it says a si- uh private or public school. It doesn't say school grounds or school property. What we have is school property with the power rails. So I feel that variant, or it wouldn't need to be a variance because there should be a footage on the powerhouse because of the school grounds and not a school.
Okay.
We have had a mental, and it's a group of people who's already so I mean, I don't know how we're only, we're only gonna have one. So at some point, we're gonna have to make that decision as to.
Well, I've got a question on that too, because, you know, I just yeah, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but marijuana right now is consumed more daily in America than I don't know if you guys are aware of this or not, but it was just on the ABC News the other night, flashing the big statistics. You know, and so you know, I just the the, the license hasn't been active, right? They paid or whatever, they haven't been active. So I have a group ready to open now.
And I'd like to touch base on that permit too that was issued. Um, that permit was allowed with it being zoned as a with the assumption that it might get turned into commercial property. Um, the city also did a permit for a campground. That was like that, unless if it was going to get zoned commercially, correct?
Yeah, it has been, yeah.
There wasn't a yes or no on that. You need more information on it.
Okay, it has not been rezoned.
No, it has not, no.
There was.
I'm not saying.
So it has not.
But you you guys did um, do a permit for a campground?
No.
Okay, but just for the dispensary is what you guys have done?
No, they just approached us and we did not go into it at that time.
Until the litigation was complete. And then it was based on getting it rezoned.
I would love to start all over on that as well.
So actually, this whole discussion is also on item eighteen on our agenda two that continues. Um, because there's been another request, so we need to address that again at that point. But um, I think Jim, what what we're saying is that unless uh we the council would not want to move forward on issuing you a variance until that marijuana has either passed or not passed.
I don't think, could I do exactly? I mean, we don't know the rules, the regulations or nothing. I mean, first it have to pass and then they'd have to establish the rules and so.
Well, the the rules will be almost copied identical from the medical as far as.
We don't know that.
Is it in the, was it in the petition?
As far as the zoning.
Yeah, for the zoning, do you know the quid pro quo that's set on the law or what's not the law, but what?
Right.
Yeah.
We are required medical, we are not required re- recreation.
Right, well, yeah, but yeah, it's
And.
It's gonna be a two hundred million dollar a year market in the state, so I don't know why you'd want to miss out on that.
And I understand too, in state law, the the confined law thirty four dash twenty G it says that the city has to allow at least one.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's what the city did was allow the bare minimum. And we don't know what the measure says on the recreational, if it's requiring the city to have one, I would feel that it's probably not in that, that they're requiring for a recreational one. But I agree with you too, there's um a lot more.
Well, that's gonna take away from your tourism. I mean, there's gonna be people that come to town, just, I mean, if you don't have okay, if if, let's just put it this way, we have the bike rally. What percentage of them drink? Probably a pretty good percentage. What percentage of them smoke marijuana? Well, I'm not sure, but quite a few.
Yeah, we won't know until that happens.
But I mean, if you just look at Colorado market and population, you look at South Dakota's population, you can kind of figure the market. But I mean, you're talking about fifteen, twenty percent of the country's population that you're not serving.
Okay, and I'm interested, I mean, it's good that you have this information in. But at this point, I think the the council is already indicating that until that marijuana recreational either passes or does not pass, the council is not ready to offer a variance at this time. They are not ready to do that. And the
Or act on anything for recreational purpose.
Yeah, we just.
But we want to be behind the game.
Yes, I guess we're gonna have.
We can look at, we can.
That's all I'm saying is I wanted you guys to get a jumpstart, a head start.
I don't know how we can get a head start on something that is illegal.
Exactly. We can look into.
Well, you just, well, I'm gonna tell you, it's the, you know, you're looking at over a fifty fifty shot, it's gonna pass.
And when you say that, also, then the government, I'm gonna feel is gonna step in, just like they did in alcohol, that it's gonna be a certain percentage of THC. I'm gonna guess their government stuff, they're gonna start regulating.
Well, they rescheduled it at the federal level, they rescheduled it. So that is like a progress in.
So I mean, it isn't gonna just be immediately the day after the election that we can.
Well, technically, it's until what, July first or whatever, if they pass something in November, you have till July first.
You're right. To do.
Until we have.
So I mean, I'm just, you know.
Get ready for.
Right, and I mean, we don't want to I don't want to be last, we don't want to be last.
Recreation, the same way, we didn't know the rules till they got forced July first.
The medical.
Medical.
The medical.
Yeah.
There's no way that we could do a variance until we ruled the written and
Right, well, it's just, I'm I'm just preparing you guys, and you know what I'm saying, I wanted to prepare you for what I was gonna come ask you if this passes, and I want you guys to be prepared. You know what I'm saying?
But but I would say to this group that's um interested in in working with you yeah, because of your confidence, if this is actually gonna work, I'd say start building your design. So that when this happens, you can move forward and and then you don't have to worry about a variance, just come you feel like this is gonna work.
Well, we, obviously, we can do that, but I mean, this was just I don't want to run into any snags that are slowing me down if we get the vote, and I want to have a plan ready to go.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? And I got people that are beating my doors in.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear.
And then the other thing is, I've also got another group that I've been talking to that are interested in maybe doing a tent on Main Street like we talked about, and so I was curious if a variance, if something, if a group was found or has been found, as I should say, would that be possible?
I think we've addressed that before, and I think we turned down the tent idea, that it's gotta be similar structure as the rest of the um, Main Street. I think that's what we found before, so I don't.
That means it gotta be metal, stick. What can it be? Because you got metal buildings, we got brick, we got stick.
Yeah, any of the above would work, but probably not a tent.
Not even on a special deal? No for the tent up?
No, I don't think we agreed to that. I I think we visited that before.
Agreed to that before.
I think we might be in the same spot, so. Okay, is there anything else on your um request that you wanted to bring to us?
Um, well, I'd make a suggestion in the parking lots over here where those curb things stick up. You know, the new parking lot behind the, over here, where they're tearing everything up. Just where those little curb things come up, I just it looks like they've been hit a million times.
The landscaping.
They're torn up, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know how many vehicles have been damaged already, but I mean, if you're gonna have those, you should have something, trees or I mean something.
Marketing guys, I mean, I've almost hit them too, even this, you know.
Okay.
And I just looked at them today, and I'm like, yeah, there's scars on.
Pretty sure it's those guys that moved snow.
Yeah, we may even know who's doing that. Okay, great, good suggestion. So, okay, well, thank you for being here, Jeff. All right, that brings us to uh item number twelve, agenda requests that.
Yes, uh, just I have a question on the sidewalk ordinance. Um, and twelve dot zero eight dot zero six zero, section B. It says work to be done by property owner or the city. If sidewalks are riot constructed, reconstructed or repaired in the manner or within the time prescribed in the notice given, city council by resolution may cause the same to be done. And the cost thereof assessed against the lots, plots or partials of land fronting or abutting upon the sidewalks, so constructed, reconstructed or repaired. Does that mean if like they were to repair a sidewalk after notice, would we reimburse them somehow or is that how much, I'm, I think I'm reading that wrong.
You are reading.
Okay, how how does that read then, like?
What this actually is saying that um the heading is work by, work to be done by the owner or by the city. So if the owner is uh notified or by resolution that that um sidewalk needs to be constructed, reconstructed or replaced. If the owner at that time cannot financially afford that or able to, then the city could do that and then charge that back.
On the, okay, yeah, on the tax, okay.
And perhaps do it over a ten year um span, so if it will cost, you know, two hundred dollars, it'd be twenty dollars a year.
Yeah, and I know you're going touch base with the sidewalk committee and everything, and so I'll I'll kind of say a little bit more at that point with that stuff, um. While I'm still talking about this, so would there be any interest in the city, like where are really bad problems area are that to pay for that cost, to pay for that sidewalk to be put in? Since we feel that's a very big safety issue and there's quite a bit, and you can't split hairs there where you go, who you're gonna help out and who you're not. Um, would it be something the city would be willing to take on financially to replace sidewalks and um to make it so everybody can walk on the sidewalk?
Well, we will be addressing that because I did as um, the the walk of bill, or the the sidewalk committee did do their walkthroughs. They have given us a report, and I was gonna um, I did send part of it out in the packet. I have maps now and suggestions and
We can wait till.
And we, yeah, so rather than having a double discussion, if that would work.
Last thing is the bike path. Um, I just sent pictures to you guys here like right before we even started. Um, there's a picture of the front of the bike path on Fourth Avenue. Uh, there's no way to easily go on there unless you jump the curb, because there's a curb right there in front of the bike path. Everybody know what I'm kind of talking about?
Okay, Fourth Avenue, I do know where Fourth Avenue is.
Right.
Down to the campus.
Right next to uh Leonard's old place.
Right, okay.
Where that bike path goes in into the trailer court. Uh, it's a, there's a sidewalk there and stuff, but right in front of the bike path is a curb, so like if someone was riding like on the road and stuff.
They have to jump it?
They'd have to jump it or go in or go in on the driveway.
Going on Leonard's driveway.
Yeah, on Leonard's driveway.
Is that fixable?
I was wondering if it would be something that we'd be able to do to like, just make it a slope like an approach going on there? Would you?
I don't know why not. Evidently, everybody's just been jumping all along. You're the first one that's ever done.
Go down a little farther, um, to the west on.
Uh, yeah.
Go a little bit to the west, and you go on that drug side.
The drug.
Bill change gradually.
Yeah, or, no, the next, next one is like me for Miller Norman all that time. And then I also sent a couple pictures of the sign. The only way you can really see that sign, well, is if you're looking at it straight on, like from the Hillcrest side. When you're coming from the sidewalk, like riding your bike down the street or something, it's it's facing to the north. I was wondering if we could get, take that sign off the north side and put two signs on the east and west side together, and then have the arrow going on both sides and then sort of direct view.
We probably want one on the north side too, because if you're gonna change the route of the bike path to go in there, then
Yeah.
you're not gonna see it.
Yeah, so like a triple one.
Yeah.
It all four sides, why not?
Which sign is it? Or what's it saying on?
Bike path and then arrow.
Oh, just one of those metal.
Yeah, I don't know, I can't even remember what it's on.
It's on Kelsar. I sent pictures, did it not send?
I didn't get any.
What the heck?
But it just sounds like that's something that Garrett can take a look at and
Yeah.
he can fix it and look at it, it shouldn't be, doesn't sound difficult.
And and I can go with you and just go to, we can meet up sometime.
Okay.
I can give you a couple of tent seats if you want to. Test it out. I got a really dusty bike in my shop, so.
Okay, that brings us to I, or did, were you complaining? I didn't.
Nope.
All right, so item thirteen, public comments. Is there any one from the public that wants to express concern? Um, at this point, and you would have three minutes to do that. Oh, Jim.
I got, yeah, I just, since we have the police officer here, I thought we could ask, you know, I have an uncle who has a medical marijuana. And he won't come up here, stay in a motel, because he says you can't smoke. And so he asked me, what can I do? And I said, I don't know. Because you can't go in the parking lot, can't go in his room, he can't drive five miles out of town. Can't go in his room, he can't drive five miles out of town. So I don't know what to tell him. Like my uncle would come see me.
And the kind of five laws says you can do it on private property.
Well, yeah, but, but out of town?
If it's allowed.
Well, that's what, this is, I'm just curious, because you know, if he wants to stay in the hotel.
Like.
He can't.
And hotels have their certain rules too.
Right.
But I'm just saying, as a general member of the public, you're talking about fifteen, twenty percent of the population again. Right? In general.
Okay.
So I'm just curious, like, if you have fifteen, twenty percent of the population coming to your town. Okay, say we only have eight, say we only have ten, or even if we only have five, I don't care what the percentage is. I mean, this guy is a Vietnam vet with injuries.
Okay.
Okay, and. He feels like he can't come to law. Because he, he wants to stay in the motel, but he, he says if I drive out of town, I'm gonna get arrested. If I go to the parking lot, I'm gonna get arrested, if I get in the motel, I'm gonna get kicked out.
Seriously, he'd get arrested for going out? Oh, he's under the influence, already spoke.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a, that's a. I mean, I just.
Yeah.
And I mean, that's all I need to say, I don't even answer, but I'm just, this is the answer, the questions I get from people.
Okay.
And I don't know what to tell him.
The one thing, it's, it's up to the business, it's, it's uh, that's their business plan, if people, if they don't want it allowed, then it.
Well, as in wall, though, there's no one that.
Yeah, because there's no smoking in public areas and that's South Dakota law.
Right, well, this is what I'm saying though is.
Like, but again.
Cigarette smoking.
Again, you being a private, you being a private citizen, you're allowed to have it on your property if so you wish.
Right.
Yeah, but.
Not in a hotel.
Yeah, because that's a business and they don't want to have it there, so that's their rules.
Well, I know, okay, he, yeah, he, he comes over for dinner. Okay, then he goes back to the motel, then he goes to sleep. And then he wakes up, and what, I mean, his routines are not. You know, he smokes in the morning, he smokes at night. Okay, it's, it isn't like, you know, five minutes here, or five minutes there.
Right.
You understand what I'm saying, it's. Just, I'm just trying to, these are, I mean, the, the man deserves respect.
So Sergeant, do you have a suggestion?
I'd love to, you know, uh, ask these questions and entertain them.
Obviously, like what you said, I mean, the DUI would be the, the thing of my concern. So the older, the older marijuana, if, you know, if it's burnt, would be a concern. So if he's gonna drive, I mean, I just wouldn't have it.
Well, that's, that's impossible, and.
You can put it, he can store it in a way, but he doesn't need to smoke it in his car.
No, that's fine, and he doesn't wanna smoke it in his car.
He, and then he shouldn't be doing it before he leaves, because he needs to know like how long it takes to affect of like. Driving, stuff like that, okay, so. Um, drinking DUIs are a big deal, okay, that's what we look for, because we don't want him to injure himself or others. And so that's where he needs to watch for, as far as the other stuff. I mean, if he's in his own location, that's up to him, but I mean, business owners can do what they want, and unfortunately, the. It's still not recognized federally, and so state, when they start doing that, I mean, states can recognize it. Sure, but businesses can do what they want, and so that's where they're.
Well, I'm asking the law enforcement, because you guys are the guys that make the rules and the, and the county guy, you know, your boss is the one that tells you.
They just have marijuana on them, if they have a medical marijuana code, we're not gonna do anything with it up to a certain. However, if there's burnt marijuana and they're behind a motor vehicle, then we're probably gonna investigate, so.
Of course, well, that's, that's why you're just proving my point.
Okay, well. Thank you, Sergeant.
They got all sorts of variations of THC, and if it touches him good, couldn't he take a, a gummy bear?
Well, it's. It's, it's hard to explain, I, I know you guys don't understand. But like, the edibles and the smokeables have different, different effects on people. So it sounds simple, but it's not, you know what I'm saying, like edibles will knock you out. Tire some people and. Uh, it just depends on the individual. The effects, so. And he, he's, he's, I mean, he's got a valid point.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up then, and I'd like to move on to item number fourteen, which is building permits. Uh, Saint Patrick's Church is got a permit in front of us to replace uh singles with metals. And they have also requested the fee to be waived.
Have we done that and asked for other churches waived?
I'm not positive, I'd have to look at that, and I didn't think to do that, kind of this, um. So.
What do you think we have, but I, I think, I think we have, what's the pay?
I wanna say it's probably a hundred and fifty.
So since you haven't had a chance to research it, could we um say? That we would move to approve this, to waive the fee unless you can find documentation? That indicates that in other churches, which Methodist churches rebuilt, Lutherans have. Um, otherwise, um, the fee would stand. Could we do that?
You can.
Because you don't have the time right now, would that work, gentlemen?
Don't move that.
Okay, Stan has moved. To waive the, waive the fee based on the fact that we have done that for other churches in our community. Okay, did someone second it? Okay, Zach seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Post, motion carries. Okay, Jared, another um permit we have in front of us. Uh, Jared Dinkie would like to build a privacy fence. At six twelve North Street, can you talk about this, please? On the back is the map, can you talk about that, uh, Garrett at all?
There was a fence there previously, and I think it's still there, but. And Jared and Preston are gonna split the cost. To put it in between them.
Okay.
I see they've been doing a lot of work over there, removing trees and Preston's doing a lot of yard work there.
Planted grass, so.
Okay, we might, okay, this is on North Street, right across from the Catholic church there, those two houses there. Okay, all right, so. Do I have a motion to approve a privacy fence?
Make that motion.
Okay, Jerry moved, Stan has seconded, any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, and our last um permit this evening is a patio and a fence extension on eight oh one. Dorothy? Have you looked at this, uh, Garrett?
I, he didn't include a map or description or anything, so.
We could approve it subject to you.
Yeah, cause I don't know, I mean, I'm sure the patio is just gonna go in the back, but I don't know where, what. He mean to extend his fence, if he's gonna go higher, or.
I'd recommend you to approve it subject to you, Garrett visiting with them.
Within setbacks and so forth, okay, is there a second, please?
Sir.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve with conditions, uh, the Casey Weaver billing permit, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, that brings us then to item fifteen, the chamber reports.
All right, your community center report should have been in your packets, uh. It's uh starting to get busy, and the community center is actually gonna be booked pretty much solid here in the next couple weeks, there's two, um, they have these. Graving schools and you go in there from like seven AM to seven PM, they're, they're very devoted. Anyway, so that's gonna be busy, and then we've got some photography schools that are gonna be here in the meeting room coming up, so, um. So yeah, um, any, any questions on that?
That's a good thing, we want, that brings people to town, absolutely.
Yeah, those photography, photography guys are pretty cool, they go out in the, they'll book it for pretty much, you know, throughout the whole day, but they'll go out in the park in the morning and. Take pictures of the Badlands, and they'll come in here and they'll do their photo, photo editing, and sometimes they go out in the afternoon, they go out in the evening, they eat here all, you know. All week long and spend a lot of money, and they're kinda interesting people, so.
And the grasslands folks bring a lot of people to town too, so that's good.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And uh, pool, uh, the pool opened yesterday. So far, it sounds like it's going well, and other than the. First day it opened and the uh code puke on the, on the deck, right? That was, that was unfortunate, but uh. It's better that they made it out, they did make it out, I think that child was so excited that the pool was open for the year, they just couldn't.
It wasn't the shot that pulled off.
Uh, you know, that would have done me in, so I could see that possible. Probably, probably, probably up there terrorizing them. Anyways, uh, we are still signing kids up for swim lessons, and we need to have available spots still, so if anybody asks, we've got that going on. Um, that's it for pool, chamber, uh, forever six oh five game is yesterday, I have fourteen people participate in our little. Uh, taking the pictures and getting a free T-shirt, so that was kinda fun, more than I thought would be coming around. Tomorrow morning's my next board meeting at seven AM, and our next chamber luncheon is Monday, not Tuesday. At noon here at Community Center, and we will have lunch, so if anybody'd like to attend that, we'd love to have you. Uh, the citywide rummage sale is June twenty second, I have seven different places to find up, and they'll be advertised in the paper. A flyer will be dropped off at the back station, so if anybody wants to go check those out. Um, let's see, what else do I have, uh, celebration planning is going well. Our T-shirt order was submitted today, and we also approved last night. Ordering ten of those nice uh picnic tables like Rick has in the backyard at the Well Drive, so. Actually, I had to go check his out and write down the little, where, where they were ordered from, and. We got a really good deal on them, and um, the chamber and the city and the celebration are all putting funds in on those, and um. So that order went today, they will live up at the park all year round, and we'll bring them down for celebration, and we'll get to use them for. Homecoming Appreciation Supper, and um, so we're kind of excited about that, we're hoping. Sorry, Garrett, we're hoping they're gonna be delivered like within a week, and we're hoping that maybe. Some nice fellows from Public Works will unload them.
Oh, yeah, we'll unload them.
Yeah.
We're not gonna put them together.
They don't come up together? They're, they're like, those two, did they require assembly?
Where are you gonna store them? Are you gonna be able to storm inside in the winter?
Well, no, oh, do they need to be stored, I, we were planning on.
Not a bad idea. But I don't know, I mean, we store ours, they look like brand new every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put them in the, where the other tables are.
You know, the wooden ones go away everywhere? Oh, they do, okay, see, I'm, I'm, I'm still.
Out at the park, we put them underneath the.
Under the. Okay, that's, that's.
But celebration ones go in to the, into state building, so.
Well, yeah, they should be, they should be delivered soon, but luckily, these are movable with skid steer only, so. There'll be no uh, no heavy lifting, it'll just be the machines. Yeah. Anyways, I think that's all, oh, and thank you for uh, cleanup day went well, we had some people show up to help, and uh, thank you for picking up tires. So you and Trevor, was you and Trevor, wasn't it? I can't remember, it was you and Trevor, you, you guys were here today. I know, but thank you for doing that, so I appreciate that, but anything else? No?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Some new coffee pots can come.
Oh, don't even talk to me about those coffee pots. We worked it a few times. They're coming, Jerry, they're coming, anyone who talks about the coffee pots. Nightmare.
Welcome, Danny.
I thought the full chrome covered the day, it took us a while to figure out what it was, and so I'm guessing the rest is coming from the park.
Welcome, Danny, for, as being our new economic development director.
Yeah, thanks for not making me come last month. Cause if I had to do one more thing last month, I probably would have just lost it, so. Uh, but it's June now, so we're all good, um. What are we gonna do if nobody falls off a celebration picnic table this year, cause the legs pulled on somebody? Where's Larry gonna get it entertained?
We can bring one down.
Just one, roll. We picked the worst one.
Yeah.
Um, so, I'm just almost a month in, because I was approved last month's first city council meeting, so. Um, this month's been lots of onboarding, learning who's who, meeting with various organizations. Dakota Resources, GOED, uh, that kind of thing, meeting with Mary and Dawn quite a bit, trying to get my feet under me, I guess. Feeling a little bit better as the calendar turned to June, but um, I've also been doing a little bit of city work, helping Carolyn. I'm learning how to update the website. Which is terrible, um, but I'm gonna whip that thing, and it's gonna look really good by the time I'm done, trust me, really, really good. Uh, working on some Facebook posts and doing that kind of thing, and then also. Put our, the office time sheet on a Google sheet, so we can update that online, rather than having to email it daily. Uh, and then the same people still have access to it, but just kind of alleviates a cluttered inbox. Um, other than that, I went to Energize, ST issues Energize conference. Live, that just last week, um, two weeks ago, that was two weeks ago, uh, down in Hot Springs. It was a pretty good experience, I had a couple of things that were previously scheduled, so I was there and left, and then came back the next day, and. Uh, but there were still some good things, met some um, good people and made some contacts down there, so. Uh, today I went to Elevate's Critical Issues Luncheon, it's about sustainability in the Black Hills and the area. And what their initiatives like, they're rolling out some things, the city of Rapid City is looking at doing some things, um, they had a few people from. She was from, visit Rapid City, and what their initiatives are for sustainability, and basically like, leave no trace initiatives and that kind of stuff, so. You know, with the uptick in tourism, that's also. Driving the fact that our. Our resources are getting ruined by all the people, because they, you know, they step places they shouldn't, they trample. Plants they shouldn't, they leave dirt, or you know, they leave garbage and tracks and et cetera, et cetera, so they're kind of, they focused a lot of it on, a little bit on that, and. And how to mitigate some of those things with the increase in tourism. Um, let's see what else, we did the senior mailboxes, obviously, then again, at graduation, and that went really well, thanks for helping keep just that crooked, because. Apparently, it was traumatic when that happened every year, but this year it was pretty seamless, about forty-five minutes. Instead of four hours, so I feel like that's probably a win, um, we also talked to Cheyenne about marketing the industrial park. So they talked about, I believe, previously me starting her doing that sometime in the future without date attached. However, since we have yet to actually have somebody start construction out there, um, we visited her about what she would post. And her, also her marketing, that type of property is the same as a house, so if it doesn't sell, she gets nothing, if it, if she sells something. She gets six percent of whatever the sales price is, so that is well worth it at this point, I feel like, so we can get, get some, get ball rolling, so. Her and I are going to meet uh, early next week and get that stuff hammered out, so. Um, our board meetings for the summer are going to be a little bit sporadic. Because I'm in the South Dakota Agriculture and Rural Leadership Program, and we have seminars every single Wednesday. That a board meeting is scheduled, and those are mandatory attendance, and they're not here, they're all over the state, so. Uh, we are moving every board meeting in the summer to a different time, June's is going to be in the eighteenth. And it will be at West River Electric's Conference Room, because this entire facility is booked, so. We are having that meeting, the eighteenth, what's your, we everyone set the July meeting at the June meeting, cause we were kind of waiting. We figured if we set it too far out, we'd probably have to move it anyway, because summer's like that, so. Um. Uh, let's see, what else do I got here, a couple maybe kind of exciting things that I don't have a lot of information about, but wanna make you all aware of. Um, Western Dakota Tech is applying for an apprenticeship grant. That would create apprenticeship opportunities similar to what's happening in Phillip with the health services. Um, and they want Wall to be one of their partner cities on this, and get some kind of a program for apprenticeships. It is very early, they are just applying for the grants, I wrote a letter of support, if they were to get it, we would also have a representative on their committee that would. Roll these apprenticeship programs out. Uh, very last thing would be that, actually, just today, I learned that Black Hills Area Community Foundation has been trying to get a hold of somebody here. And so Callie Rowland called me today and she said, um, so this, this guy from Black Hills Area Community Foundation said that he tried to talk to somebody from Wall. And they said they weren't interested in a housing grant. And I was like, okay, I don't feel like that's right, so I. And I was like, okay, I don't feel like that's right. So I got ahold of him today and we're gonna meet next week also and discuss this. Uh, because Black Hills Area, yeah, something to do with the, like leaned up Callie's conversation. Uh, something passed Congress um, that created this money and there, the community foundation is helping distribute it. They're putting it in the hands of communities so you can buy it, if you can use it to build new houses, basically. Build affordable housing is what it's for. So we are going to learn more about that and hopefully have some exciting things to share with that. So I told her at the very least, I could maybe use it to build a house. So, yes, we're interested.
So that could be used for the city or for private citizens?
Not entirely sure yet. I think, oh, it sounded like you could eh, again, very early conversation today, but uh, it sounded like developers or if they wanted to build affordable, I think it's how they're building all those affordable apartments in Rapid. It's kind of what I I surmise. I'm just, I don't think, I don't, wasn't told that, but um, they did, she did say that they have a lot of success in Rapid so far with building this, the affordable housing and the amount of apartment buildings that are going up in that town and make me think that might be part of it. So I'm, I'm thinking developers, but, but it could be just somebody who needs to help building a house as well, so. Kind of sounded like everybody. When I said, well, I could use it, she said, yeah, actually, good, so. So I got.
Alright, sounds like you've gotten a lot done in a month, so.
I also cleaned the office, so if you want to come look at that office, or you want me to come to your office, I charge, but I organize everything and throw away things you don't need. Try, well, I, I.
Alright, thank you, Danny. Okay, that moves us on to item number seventeen, which is to approve the, uh, an airport grant and we have Travis Hershey with us and as a preliminary comment to that, uh, I want to express appreciation uh, to him because he's always encouraging us to show up at the table when we need to be. He's the reason Carolyn and I were in Deadwood to the airport uh, conference. And then as recently as May twenty eighth, uh, he caused uh, me to attend their uh, Rapid City uh, me, capital improvement meeting. And at that meeting then were FAA uh, managers and those folks were uh, from uh, North Dakota or Minneapolis. Here, there were several people sitting at that table and again, showing up is a big deal. So thank you, Travis, for getting us to do that, so.
You're, you're too kind, Mary. With uh, I appreciate the, the city's engagement and you being engaged in these conversations. It's a it's easy for them to, to hear me talk, they hear me talk all the time. I, that's, it's my job to know airports. But having, having the, the city engage really shows the interest and uh, understand that their, their money is going to, to a good use. Alright, so what I have, I, I've given everyone a little, little packet here. I think you've all received in your uh, in your council packet to the, the full grants agreement and then there's also a contract hiding, hiding in the back there somewhere too. At this time, really, we're just talking about the grant agreements, um, but I want to include the uh, the contract just so you understand what the grant agreement's for. So when we agreed to applying and uh, applying for this grant agreement, really, we're committing at the time to the FAA and to the state that we're interested in pursuing this contract. So I just want to make sure, uh, you know, if we're gonna approve this, it kind of comes with a side of that we're gonna have to go into contract as well. So uh, just wanna be, just wanted to include that upfront, just so we're all on the same page. But first off here, I have a project status report where I'm gonna just run you through kind of where we're at on, on our various projects out at the airport. The uh, the big project here, the runway project, we are open for use. We've had some great events out there, uh. And uh, we are just waiting on some final punch list items. Uh, Mood Electric has their, their signs, I believe, and we're supposed to be getting those installed like this week or next week. From there, we are working on establishing turf, turf, we're really close on that. And then we have to remove some of the erosion control. Then lastly, I'm waiting on some maintenance, operation and maintenance manuals, mostly for our electric. So you guys have the, all the model numbers and what you need to do to maintain. You know, say you need a switch, a light bulb out. There are all LEDs out there, so you have all the right information here. I'm sure you would very appreciate having that information for when that time comes. Hopefully, we don't have to do that for a long time with the, the new LED system, but you know, time, time it will come, so. We want to make sure we get that information. So the next steps with that are, I'm gonna come, come June, July, we'll, we'll be looking to finalize that project, final payment on it. And then uh, we'll have a final balancing change order. Overall, we came in under budget on the project, so always good news, so. Love to be able to report that. Um, next project here, uh, the Aegis project, that is the, the airport AGIS. Fundamentally, that is to update the system in the FAA so that they have the right runway information, right, right, width, length. And then that will allow us to get approaches. They're called IFR approaches, so when you're, when you're flying in and it's bad, bad weather, we'll have an approach into our, the Wall Airport that they'll be able to fly in with the and use their instrument. So it's instrument flight rules, so they're able to use their instruments to fly in. There's certain rules that are developed that, like, alright. You know, you see the runway at this point, you either have to make decision that you can land or, or you can't. And uh, that project is helping to establish that, so. Where we're at with that is we completed a preliminary site survey. We've done the QA QC on it. Come June, July, we'll be flying it. We'll get you guys a new uh, aerial image of your, of your airport. And then uh, hopefully come, we have a little bit of time on that project still to, to complete it, but uh, just a little update on that. The next one is the one that I'm, I'm here for and that is the GA taxi lane and apron expansion. So with this project, we drafted the grant agreement, we drafted a scope and P. Um, so looking at this here, I'd like everyone to maybe flip to your next page on your packet. You have to make, see how deep's the bigger sheet here. So this is the capital improvement plan that we talked about at the uh, the meeting on May twenty eighth. So in twenty twenty four, we have shown two projects. One of them is the taxiway steel coat project that the state's handling. I don't have a whole lot of information on that one, the state's handling that project. But the other one is the design services for the general aviation expansion and taxi lane design. Uh, it's shown in here as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's actually, I think, just a hundred and eight thousand dollars. It came out to be so a little under what we had planned. So this is just the design of it. We'd be looking to do construction in twenty twenty six. The reason we're doing this design so early here is so that when someone comes with a, an idea that they want to build a hangar, we know what elevation we put it at. We get all that information so that we can plan, they can start working on their hangar and it's gonna work out overall, like, overall, it's gonna work and everything's gonna flow together from, so. So, um, onto the next page here, I've got a little exhibit that shows the existing conditions of what we have out there, kind of. It's kind of the existing conditions. It's part of the runway project. And then in red is what we're looking to design with this kind of. Uh, so there's gonna be an apron expansion, a taxi lane expansion. The real benefit is that we're gonna be able to add five spots for hangers. Hopefully, we'll be able to get the uh, the state fire, fire, our wild plant fire out there and they might have a great spot that we'll be able to get them. Otherwise, we'll have spots for FBO, which is a fixed based operator, so bigger one, kind of like what Preston does, Dowager Airport. And then four spots on a taxi lane for some smaller hangers, for some, someone local pilot if they want to build it. Any questions or anything on any of this? I'm kind of flipping through those, some things. I know we're not all living in the airport world like I do, so if you have questions, feel, feel free to ask. Um. But then that brings us to the last page here and this is really the, the bulk of what it comes down to with uh, with what we're looking at here today. With the grant application. So costs included in this grant application is Mead Hunt's design fees and that'll be ninety-eight thousand dollars. There's an FAA closeout report that Mead Hunt will complete for a thousand, three hundred dollars and some, some change. And then there's some administrative costs. Those are if we have to do some advertising, um, we have to do a disadvantaged business enterprise plan update, various things that can, can get included in there. So an overall cost of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. The big takeaway though is that ninety percent of it will be funded using the bipartisan infrastructure bill from the FAA and that's a grant for ninety-eight thousand dollars. So that is what we will be applying for, so. The, the city of Wall will be responsible for five percent of costs, five percent will come from the state, ninety percent from the FAA. So we, we'd be looking at a cost locally here at about five thousand four hundred dollars or so. With all that being said, I would recommend the council at this point to uh, approve and sign the grant agreement. Uh, from what later on, once we get the grants, we'll at words, so. Take that back. Approve and sign the grant application. We'll get the grant applicant, or the grant agreement back from the FAA. Uh, we'll end up having to sign that and at that time, I'll come up with my contract. I don't want us getting into a contract when you guys don't have funding. So we're gonna hold off on ours until we actually get the funding secured. So, what's my intention there, so.
When you, when do you know if you get the grant?
Very close. I don't know how fast the, how fast the federal government works. Joking aside, uh, like thirty days probably or so, hopefully thirty days. Might be a little longer, but uh, but there's a little, little time limit.
Probability is pretty good, I presume.
Yeah, so, so we're using entitlements that are that uh, the way the program works is that the city of Wall is entitled to these dollars to help out their airport and develop their airport. So the, I mean, it's like ninety-five percent chance you're gonna get those, so I'm saying. It's your money that's entitled to you from the FAA. You get a, for, you get well, there, just recently, about a month ago or not even, a couple of weeks ago, uh, the Congress passed a five-year plan for their AIP that actually increased the overall funding of the airport improvement program from three point two billion to four billion dollars. So first increase in twenty years, so hopefully they, the FAA has not figured out what that means to divvying up the dollars, but hopefully that means we give more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year. Hopefully that bumps up to, I don't hundred and seventy-five, two hundred, that'd be great if we did, you know, construction costs continue to go up. We don't seem to get better funding and, and like I said, there's been no increase for the last twenty years. You know, they went from three point two to four. I'd like to see it go in the right direction, but let's be honest, con- construction costs have gone up more than whatever that is, fifty, twenty-five percent in the last twenty years. I mean, that's we got some work to do on the federal level with that, but that's, that's a bigger discussion than the city of Wall here.
Okay, so what, do I have a, a motion then to approve and be able to sign this grant application, so Mead Hunt can move forward? Okay, Zach is moved. Stan has seconded. Any other questions or concerns?
So I do have, if we don't get the grant, then we're just decide that it's done and over.
I, I, we can, we can talk then, um, if that, if it doesn't come through, we can talk, uh, about what we end up doing. I, I don't see this, us not getting this grant, um, but uh, we, we'll, we'll cross that road if that happens, would be my recommendation, you know?
This is only a grant application, so if it doesn't get passed, we are not obligated for any dollars or any money to them. It's just, this is giving him the approval to um, apply for this document that he's got in front of us tonight. Okay, so there was a motion to it was moved and it was seconded. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Alright, I appreciate the, the council here and your movement. Mary, you mind if I snag your signature right here so we can get this in tomorrow?
So I need you to sign.
Six six, right? You'll send us a copy of that. Okay, so.
I, we, we want to, we want to. I, I need a, do you guys have a W nine? Or at all? Yeah, let, let, let's talk about that. The, we're, we're, we're thinking about sponsoring uh, the, the golf. Something completely different here. There's a golf, golf, golf tournament that's uh, Mead Hunt would like to sponsor for, for.
Yeah, because that's Stan. He's, he's on that.
I appreciate it.
Okay, so that brings us to item number eighteen, which is a request for information. And uh, that letter or email actually was in your packet from an individual. And they're interested in pursuing a medical cannabis license. And he's trying to check on availability and asking Carolyn to assist. And Carolyn's seeking what, what uh, she would like direction from the council as to how to respond to this individual. Does, am I saying that correctly, Carol?
Right.
Where's he looking at?
For location?
Location.
Um, he's actually looking at fat ones.
Um, I guess for the license that the city did approve, we have to do something with that. Somehow, because don't they have the license technically, but and correct me if I, if I'm wrong, um, wasn't there a certain time that they had to put up a building for it, but with that not being switched over to commercial, they weren't able to put up a building? So who does that fall on? Good point.
We still have that application on file. Is that correct?
Yes, so what happened, you know, they applied, um, there was a form that the city needed to complete for them that then goes to the state to finish out the license application. And at the time that they submitted, they were the only ones actually that submitted, um. The city said that they weren't willing to approve that location because we were in the middle of litigation. So litigation is over, so I guess I just didn't know how we needed to proceed.
And going back to where the city accepted that permit, it says in law that it has to be commercial or industrial land.
Right.
So the city approved a permit that was void because they put in for out, out, no, it's void, but it wasn't zoned correctly. So how could we accept a permit that was zoned incorrectly? So, commercial or industrial?
Yeah, you're right.
And now that there's been more interest in a medical license, are we allowed to open up the pool again?
So when, when did they, when did they do this?
November of twenty two?
So isn't it, like, doesn't it only last for a year? Is there a timeframe on that or?
Yeah.
Well, but it really never got completed.
So really, we haven't really.
We got permit then, right, or?
Uh, it was, if you look at the minutes, I believe it says that it was approved based on getting through the litigation to approve a zoning change for the location.
With the, with it not being rezoned, then it'd be, it would be accepted then, correct? Because if, that was the factor of it is that the, it had to get rezoned and if it didn't get rezoned, then wouldn't it be void?
Seems that way to me. Maybe, it does, it would seem that way to me too. But just, the, the people that are doing this is, that's a different outfit, right?
Yes.
Yes, but only one license.
What's building are they looking at?
That voice.
Oh, that voice, I see.
And with, since we're talking about the medical, again, I want to come back to the power halls. Um, that takes up a lot of real estate in town because it's centrally located. The school building is no longer there, the three-story school building that a lot of us went to school at is not there anymore. It's used for a gym for people of all ages to come there and use as a recreational place.
They do have whole classes there.
Because it's school property. Like Civic Center holds, or not Civic Center, I'm sorry, the community center. We hold stuff like that, don't we, like?
No.
Not practices and stuff.
Well, this, it isn't. Well, this, it isn't just practice, they have what they call lifetime something.
Lifetime sports.
Yeah, that a class is actually, that's what I was told when I asked.
They have, they have weights in the morning from like seven to seven forty-five.
When kids get credit for school or those, or that class.
And then I know they do go. I think if there's something going on in the gym, like a funeral or, you know, something set up, I know they do take the. You know, in the springtime, the kids go down to the gym and.
To the powerhouse.
Yeah.
They transport it with the bus. So, and I think the school board actually addressed this question too and determined. Through their legal counsel that yes, that powerhouse is considered school. A functioning school building. So, right?
I don't, I can't hear.
Well, zone by the school.
It's not zoned as a school, though, there's no zoning signs around saying that it is a school, like the school, our actual school. Because that's zone saying that there's a school ahead, slow fifteen miles per hour. While schools in session or whatever between these times, there's no markings whatsoever like that of our house.
So whose responsibility is it to zone a school, I mean, put signage up for school, is that the? Schools responsibilities or? Okay, I think we need to reach out to the administration at the school then and check into. Properly zoned, or not zoned, properly identified, I guess.
Because it's used forty-five minutes of the day, they have a credit class there, that's why it's still going to be a school, correct?
Well, the school owns it, right?
Yeah, I, I'm not saying it's not school property.
Yeah.
Who owns the school property?
But in state law, it says a private or uh, public school. Not, it doesn't say property in law, it says school.
Okay, well, I think you'll have to take that up seriously with the school board because.
So.
Yeah, I don't think we can, this isn't our territory, I just won't feel right about that.
I did talk to the, um, Sarah Frankenstein one time, she did say that she. Believe that the city would have the power to designate it.
Okay, because seriously, someone approached the school about this, I saw that in the minutes. They referred to their uh, legal counsel, Rod, whoever in here, and that's what they came back with. No, that property is considered school, so, so I think that's where it is and if. You feel strongly about it being uh, identified differently or whatever, that again, that's gotta be a school. Thing, would you make note of that, Carolyn, that we reach out to the superintendent or the business manager and see what they can do about. Getting it properly. The signage uh, properly done, I think, yeah.
What's the distance from the daycare?
Same as a church.
So, okay. So, this kind, what, how are we gonna re- reply to this gentleman then? In terms of where we're at on the medical, can, medical cannabis. Is it available or not? Are we still up in the air on it, we?
And before we do that, should we contact the owner of Puffy's to like kind of. Give them a heads up that hey, it's been this long and. We saw that the licenses, it's not gonna be rezoned to commercial and as per what we said in our meeting. Um, your license is no, or your permit is no longer valid because it's not getting resold.
And possibly they're not even interested anymore actually, perhaps we need to find that out because. I think they've got several throughout Balfour, Sturgis and Rapid City, so maybe they've met their max and they're not ready to build another. Yeah, so we may be worried about something we don't even, so let's do that, or would, would the council agree? That Carolyn reach out first to Puffy's to see if they're still interested. And then that would help you respond to this individual.
And also then, so if it's not void, then we would have to open up another time for applications to be put in. And so then probably respond back to this, uh. This guy, ask him a question about, after you talk to Puffy's of course, and tell him that we'll have a reopening.
Right, so let's bring that back to the next council meeting because availability is a big thing. So we need to figure out if Puffy's in, in or out, and then. Uh, we can address availability, if we're gonna open it back up or whatever, so, but I think Puffy's is a key at this point. And then secondly, reach out to the school and ask about signage, seems like, okay, anything else on that then? Okay, moving on to a concern form that we have in front of us. And uh, our sergeant was waiting to help us address this tonight and talk about. Uh, since we've had several dog issues recently.
She said she had to, she had to leave, so.
Yeah, I know, that's what I said, she was staying here as long as she dared to.
Yeah.
Uh, to try to address this, but we just didn't quite get it back, get to it fast enough. So has everyone had an opportunity to review this concern form? And does anyone have any questions or comments or?
Out there, they have said this concern. They probably keep moving and just tear up the room.
Well, the one thing I think.
We could quit maintaining it really well, so.
Well, I just, this, well, I think, don't think, I know the speed limit is twenty-five and it, at very least should be.
Yeah.
It could be brought down to, I mean, all streets in town are twenty.
And I'll be honest with you, we can change all the signs in the world, they know what the speed limit is, they, I mean. I mean, we can change them, but no one's there, I mean, I don't know whatever happened to going and chewing some kid's butt, cause they're, I mean. That's what used to happen to me when I, you know, instead everything's, you know. On Facebook or anonymous letter go, I get comments all the time about my kid, it's like. Listen, what's meeting, cause I'm sick of getting talked to, you know, it's just like, and that's what's frustrating is. You know, locals know the speed limit, they know how fast it is, and I have witnessed these people. We're out there working, they leave their driveway, they get close to this house, and then they hammer on it, and then as soon as they're by, they let up, like. You know, I don't know what the.
Because the speed limit is, uh, there is, there is a sign on both ends, it says twenty-five.
Yeah, we can change it.
There is a kids, it's a, it says kids at play, there's a picture of kids at play. Okay, so what more is the city supposed to do?
I don't, nothing, I, I don't know.
I'd be in favor of bumping it down to twenty dollars.
I think that's good.
Yeah, and.
Normal streets in town.
You know.
But to be honest, I didn't, uh, I thought it was twenty and then Matthews above it. I didn't even realize it was a, and I go out there a lot, I didn't even realize it was a. Kid famous, you know, it's right there, yellow thing, I guess I know.
You just saying that, I watch. We should go Glenn Street. Half the people speaking are Walt people.
You bet they are.
Oh, on the Glenn Street. If they're local people, find them, maybe, I mean, at least we can get the low, sorry, we can get the locals. And you'll probably get me, however, now and then you look down hill, you know, but. Especially when you're coming from Rapid and the speed limit is fifty-five or sixty in town.
And those same people, it's not just on Glenn Street.
Well, we do have a couple of good citizens that drive about seventeen, eighteen miles per hour when they see someone speeding, so they slow them down.
City guys might do that too.
Okay, so seriously, to address what's in front of us, and that's why I'm disappointed that the sergeant let, had to leave. What she, because we had a discussion about this before the meeting, what she indicated to us is that we need to, uh. Because when a person for, uh, does a complaint. It is our responsibility to acknowledge that we have considered the complaint and get back to them. And what she, uh, the sergeant indicated is in this case, you tell this person to uh, dial. The deputies. And if this person could get the, um. License plate, that would even be better, if she can take pictures, that's even greater. And then, yes, this is actually a law enforcement thing, and that's how it needs to be handled. Which is kind of close to, but not what you're saying, because yes, if someone knows these individuals, these young people that are doing this. And this, the thing that gets me choked up. Was I have been worrying about this on Glenn Street about a mom pushing a baby stroller with tikes in tow. And we're sending them to the street into forty mile an hour uh, traffic, and now I'm gonna see these faces. When I think about that, every dog on time, so Garrett, you are right. There, there are connections here, we have identified this person, have a pretty good idea this who is this. And that person needs to be directly um, contacted and approached and said. And there's people involved in this conversation that can do that. They need to do that, talk to those kids. Just like your kids get talked to, and I know that that happens for you, so why aren't we approaching these? So with that being said, uh. Either you, Carolyn, or myself, I'm gonna get back to this person that's, that's uh. Brought this consider, our concern forward and tell them that that's what we want them to do. Is call the deputies because that's what our sergeant has instructed us to do at this time and get the license plate if needed. And this is a law enforcement item, anybody else have any other concern? And if somebody knows these individuals, and I think we do, we need to start talking to them. In terms of who these kids are, because that's a lifetime problem if you take out. A young family, that lasts a lifetime, so life is too short, we're getting. Getting that figured out, any other comments about that?
Then we can change it, be lowered to twenty then, or we have to make a motion or just, we have to talk to the police to do that too, or?
No. That's just ordering a different sign, right?
There could be different sign.
If you publish it or anything, of course, it might cost you money, but I mean. Flags on there so they notice it right away.
Cause I'm running out of red flags.
Isn't it a sure part to have somebody that used to stay that would just stand there and made those red flags back in court, I think.
Okay.
No, we can, I can put the, I have to pick some more, because I don't have enough.
Okay, so.
I mean, it will be reflected in my minutes that the speed limit is just.
What the speed limit is?
Versus putting a publication in the paper that, I think they'd read it either way, you know.
The guilty people won't read that, they read none.
But some direct conversations need to happen.
Exactly.
Okay, let's move on to item number twenty, finance officer report.
Um, so I did put the publication in the paper about uh. Taking bids for the airport and morning side hay ground and, um. I did include a map of the area out there. That's is highlighted in blue that will be able to be hay, which excludes the new. Seed planting out there, so, and I will, anybody that submits a bid or calls or whatever, I'll share that map with them. So that they kind of know what they wanna bid, you know.
We'll open bid to that soon.
At the next meeting. What's that?
Yeah, assuming we get some.
Right, there was two people expressed or called about it, and so. I have been able to get ahold of the one and I didn't get the other one called.
Well, maybe good just to let people that is the for.
Yeah, and that's basically who they are.
Okay.
When, when do bids close? Two o'clock on the phone.
Okay, so basically you're saying that the airport and morning side, where's that?
Up by the trap range.
Okay, so airport and the trap range.
Is it okay to, I mean, that needs to be moved out there, it's always kind of been a together thing.
Yeah, yeah, no, it definitely is.
Okay. Airport, morning side, hay ground, bid has been advertised, it is due back on January or June.
Twentieth and two.
Twentieth at two o'clock, it has been put in the paper. But this is another way that I'm trying to use that to get that information out to people that might be interested. And then with that being said, also at some point, we need to talk about uh, getting that farm ground. Uh, planted, that's also, that was wheat ground, did you have some thought on that, Garrett? How to do that, is that something you can do, or do we need to, um?
Better hire someone, cause last time I did it, didn't come up.
I would agree, I think we'd wanna hire somebody.
Yeah.
Not, not that you don't know what you're doing. Right, if it don't come up, it's.
Yeah.
So is the farm crop out of there, or?
There's, I just, I was out there spraying Canadian thistle today and there's, it's inside, it's, no, it's not. It's like, I think it's all volunteer, what's in there now.
Right.
So there's nothing really planned.
You're just talking about, you're talking about is what's inside the fence.
Yep, they got tensed in, and they redid that fence, so.
So it'd have been some of the wheat field and I, it's not planted, it's.
So sure, need to be sprayed off and.
So how can we best uh, let people know that we are interested in someone, um. Trying to plant that, do we have, put a small advertisement in, put it just in the minutes and see if someone sees it, or?
Williams Range did.
We're not, no, we're not taking that on, or he's not. No.
No, I don't even. I can figure out.
Okay, we'll, we'll try to figure out a way to get the word out then, that we're looking for somebody to plant that. Okay, so Carolyn, then I'm sorry that we interjected there, what about your out of office?
Well, I was just gonna mention next week, starting on Tuesday mid-morning, I will be. Um, headed to my finance officer's training in Spruish. Be out of the office, have my cell phone, of course, if anybody needs to call or text, and if I can't respond. If I'm in a session, I'll get back to anybody as soon as I can, so.
You're up from Tuesday to?
Uh, I should be back mid-afternoon on Friday, it usually gets done around eleven or so, I think, so. I will head back.
Okay.
That's really all I have.
That's all you have?
Unless you want me to break on my daughter's wedding, no, just kidding.
But you did mention the other day, I overheard you, um, telling about some interesting phone calls we've gotten. Uh, in reference to our airport, using our airport.
Oh, I have received several phone calls saying that they were, um, wondering if. They could fly into our airport if it was open and everything, so yeah. Question on fuel, and I explained that that's part of our next project, and usually when I say that, those pilots understand that and. They know, they said, well, that's great that you got that, you know, in the plan to get that in place.
And where were some of those calls from?
South Carolina, I think was one of them, and I can't remember where the other one.
Alaska?
Was it, I don't think I received that, I think Dave Jedlicka had received or somehow talked.
Oh, no, is it, what was in your, um, visitor register?
Oh, yeah, that was Alaska.
That was Alaska, okay, so somebody actually landed and.
It's dead overnight, they stayed overnight, I don't know what hotel they stayed in, but evidently stayed. It's dead overnight. They stayed overnight. I don't know what hotel they stayed in, but evidently stayed.
So that's pretty cool, very cool.
There would be way more of that. We have fuel out there now, I know you got your work going on, but the fuel is, uh, it's, you know.
Yep, we're heading in that direction. We'll get there. Sometimes you just.
We got the big thing done.
Yeah.
The room.
We got the start.
It's critical, not just years and years and years.
And getting the hangars will be another important part, and then we can follow up with that.
You just need to be able to keep getting them granites.
Definitely. Okay, public works, Garrett.
Um, got pool open. I think we finished fixing the heater about twelve thirty-five before the pool opened. Um, everything, I mean, just typical stuff, but pools open. Part of you kids there, uh, just mulling. Um, kinda have sprayed some Canadian Thistle and beetles today, and then on this lot, on the west side of the railroad tracks, there's a big, there's a big water hole there, so this afternoon, we worked on filling it. Water just sits there. That's where a lot of the mosquitoes come from, so. I mean, we've been working on the dishes to get them flowing, so now we're starting to fill in low areas and see if that'll help over there, and. About it. Paved the trim and, what's that?
Have they started paving yet?
Uh, they were working on, uh, oh, what do they call them? Hard pans. They, they did, they filled the manhole over here on the end of Main Street this, today with flow of fill, so that's filled. They're working on redoing the curb and everything, so. They're not paving yet, but they're working, so. And Jay said they would pave, start paving Saturday morning at five. Cause they had a peace break on the paper, so.
Now, they did have a breakdown, which that happens, even with best laid plans, that happened. So, and we did reach out to Jay, and Carolyn will be putting this out on Code Red in the morning. He said that on Friday, that'd be tomorrow, they'll continue to work on the hand paving that you're talking about, and finalize, uh, setup for paving Saturday morning. Then on Saturday at five o'clock in the morning, as long as Corral can keep up, uh, producing a hundred to a hundred and twenty cubic yards an hour, they will begin paving. They will finish the north side of the road around four P M. And then he called it sawing activities will follow, and depending how fast the concrete curves piers, they, it could go into the evening hours. On Sunday, the crew is gonna start, uh, work on stripping forms for part of the day and then clean up. And then next Monday through Friday, they will continue with handwork throughout the project. And they will be paving the south side of the road, uh, beginning on Tuesday, June eighteenth. So they, he wanted to note that the access to the north side will be limited to walking only until the pavement has achieved strength. And that would most likely take seven days, depending on the weather. So all of that information is going out on that Code Red, so that everyone.
Going two messages. Actually, I am limited to that on my.
Okay, so let's do Friday and Saturday, and then let's do Sunday, Monday. Okay, but I think that's important. He is trying to communicate, but again, it's, it just depends on.
And I talked to Schraders and, uh, White Trash today, and we, I got permission from Dustin for those guys to be able to park in the original entrance to the campground, and we built a little bridge so they can walk across the creek over there if they wanna park there, but, so.
So basically, everybody's got access, and they're, you're going in out of your way to keep communicating with those people and letting them know, you know, that right now, this is how it's gonna work, but it is gonna be so nice when that's done, so.
And they've all, they've all been good.
The residents.
Your residents.
And the contractors have been good about working with them also, keeping them informed. Okay. A-anything else? The pools up and going and all those things, struggles have come about. Okay, very good. Anything else?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Um, as far as mayor report, the street committee, which is Stan and Rick, and I did meet with Dakota Mill. And, uh, three items were discussed, which was the approach, the First Avenue, and uh, trying to create a buffer. And so, uh, Stan, would you like to make a recommendation that, uh, you feel that uh, we should continue to discuss with Dakota Mill? And let them come back to us with a proposal on specifics? Is that what we've decided?
Where we left it, that they are gonna come back to us at some point after they've become agreed, gonna still what we're doing, and it'll, it'll happen. And also indicated it probably really would be like this year, or might even be next year for that part of it.
Yes. Everything's going slow, so I need all right breakdowns.
So at least it's done, a work in progress.
Right. And they, they don't need it until fall, so it's not like it's gonna be done like in the next week.
Fall with twenty twenty-five.
Twenty's going fall.
Well, I think they'd like to, but I can't say for sure either, because Western Construction's gonna do the roadwork. I would think they'll have to get with Garrett and do some more planning and on that to get the, that's just my personal feeling, that they're gonna have to do a little more work in their role. They did discussions.
Of course.
Just wanted to hear feelings on it first, and then now initial planning will have to go in and be approved by you guys.
Okay, so anyway, that's the way we did leave it. Then we'll continue to talk to them and get their specifics, so. That's what happened with that street.
And then Garrett, you were gonna talk to the county to make sure.
You mean with the, the approach, yeah.
Okay, and then the next item was, um, I had appointed a walking committee or sidewalk committee, and that was Sharon Geigel, Donna Crown, and Lex Heather Shaw that worked on that. And they, um, came back to us, the information or the verbal report was in your, uh, packet. And, um, Sharon gave a review summary and talked about the streets that have been improved, and, um, they were all color-coded as far as what, maybe they started out as red, now they're to green or yellow. But anyway, she went, um, to a great effort there. They, it was based on the twenty seventeen D O T as well as the twenty twenty-one, uh, Wellmark study. Definitely, uh, something that came out is that about fifty percent of our streets need attention of one sort of another. Uh, the colored map that she shared with me, and I will send that around because I knew this wouldn't, electronically transmit very well. Um, so you have to look where, where it's, the actually the pins or the highlights um, are, because some of this map, uh, produced by the chamber with, has blue markings in it too, so you have to look for the pin. But where green is, that's good. Yellow is fair, red is poor, and blue is where it's non-existent. So that's an interesting concept in itself, that like fifty percent of our sidewalks need attention. And Stan and Rick kinda were explaining that to me, that how that kinda happened. We're fortunate to have the awesome streets that we have. And, uh, obviously somehow we haven't stayed up on the sidewalk part of it, except for where we've put in new streets. And then we have curb and gutter and, uh, ex, ADA accessibility, so um, that all is good, and so I'm thinking that what we probably need is a ten-year plan, perhaps. We identify, and they did a good job of identifying what our critical issue is. And that happens to be, uh, substantiated by Rick's, uh, numbers, where he's indicated repeatedly that seventy-five percent of the traffic comes in off one-ten exit or under one-ten bridge from the park. And so then, uh, what Katie, uh, did for us is put together a long gated map here too that I wanna share. But if we're looking at Glen Street, it starts at the auto delivery and ends at the park. So as I've, if you'd like to pass that around, as I, I drove that, this may be a, a two-year, uh, process to approach that. Uh, some of it's very good, some of it's not. Um, so perhaps that's where we are next, is trying to figure out a, a plan that we would want to implement and approach it over a, a period of time, because uh, city budget, um, based on the fact of the amount of infrastructure that we have designated or, uh, spent money on over the last few years. Uh, Zach, you talked about would the city put in, um, all of the sidewalk? I would say the dollars aren't there, but we can look at it in the budget process, but according to our ordinances, it does say the property owners are. Stan shared a very interesting, um, factor about his, about Ben's experience in Mitchell, when he, uh, invested in a townhome, was it, that he was doing?
Part of apartment complex, and the city just kinda come along and told them they were gonna improve the sidewalk that was there, and he would be paying for it. I mean, they didn't give an option, and I think a lot of cities did, I mean, I think that's
Exactly.
City, and you just get assessed, we've just never, ever done that here, ever.
Even though our ordinances say that, it's, yeah, we just.
I'm not promoting that we do that here either, because that's, uh, and I've been on the council a long time, and we've talked about it. I mean, this is a new.
Subject?
A new subject.
It isn't. Not new?
Oh, years and years, decades and days.
I understand. I'm looking at sixty years of experience. That's why I get it.
And I could go back, it, it's probably comes up, I, you know, I'm just guessing, I don't know. Probably has come up four or five times over the last many years that I've been here, and then it's a hot topic, and we, you know, we, we kinda look at ideas to do, we, at one time, we were going to uh, in a two-year period, if people did it, the city would contribute, pay for half of it. Or I don't know what the percentage was, but when it got down to it, there just seemed to be too many red flags and too much resistance, and each time it just kind of gets forgotten. Because it will be, it will be met with resistance. I mean, it's never, we've never forced it on anybody, and, uh, we didn't allow some to take them out, which was a bad mistake.
Oh, God, yeah.
But that's, that is done, so. And your idea, the city just paying for that is great if we have, if we have the money, but we don't have it, especially.
We don't have it now, for sure.
Is there a way we could look in, like if there is grants or something for like?
Well, I think at one time years ago, now that you, you've mentioned that, that, I mean, there was some possible grants that we could put sidewalks in, and I think that and then again, I'd have to really think about tools that, we, you know, there was a grant, and we put the bike paths in.
Yes, how was a bike path? What grant did that?
I'm sure the community access grant.
That's what I worry about, sorry, and we're worried of sidewalk. But the kids on the bicycles now are gonna be riding on them, which, fine, they're not on the street, but then aren't they gonna be around older people on the sidewalks, and then you're gonna have to have some kind of ordinance of, no riding your bicycle on the sidewalk, or if you're not.
Currently do.
Yeah, we do.
Not supposed to ride them on the main street specifically, but I see it all the time, but I'm not the policeman, so I'm not gonna say anything.
Then if we force people to put the sidewalks in, you know, then I presume that they need to be done properly, and.
Though, so is that who it has to meet on each sidewalk? What kind of sidewalk you have here, you have to match? And here, you've gotta match in between?
And then they're gonna have some of the bushes.
And that's the thing I wanna touch base on too, is, you know, we do have like some bushes and trees that are encroaching kinda on. And like, I don't know, like reflecting in the manager or something, or like, can we do a code red or something? Just people with property, like, trim up your trees or shrubs to, for full access of the sidewalk, and like, you know, if you know your neighbor doesn't have the means or access to get those tools to buy up shrubs, like be a neighbor and help out, and go ask them if you can do it first, you know, but.
Actually, we have, uh, called individuals and indicated, because someone has mentioned it. And people usually are very good about that.
And this map here too, uh, which is good, but it does not address Stone Drive or Echo Valley or Sherwood Edition, so if you count them areas, that's probably way over fifty.
Way over seventy, so.
So do you have to have curb and gutter in order to just put in sidewalks? Do those usually work together?
You know, when, you know, you know, like, like that, but.
Right.
You gotta have, uh, some land, so. Like say Stone Drive, I mean, it would be, uh, I'm kind of a nightmare to try to put on sidewalks. I mean, I'm not, you do, you just have to get land from people that own property, and it would be it would be near impossible, I think. Or widen the road, I mean, but, you know, you're just in I think it's a good plan. I think we need to kinda move slowly and not, if we really are gonna do it. That's just my opinion, that would give people time to.
To talk about it, to think about it, to absorb it.
I mean, I don't think we want to rush into it. I don't know, maybe there are some grants out there, but I.
Could we have, could you look into that, or like, uh?
I actually asked our economic director, she's looking for other grants. And I asked her to start looking especially for bike path, because I think that's what will work in Echo Valley and Stone Drive. That's what those people would love.
That's what we're.
Out there.
Yes.
Um, and the, the rest, to me, if you don't have a plan, your planning will fail. So when we sit back and say, we can't get this figured out, we've done this for thirty years and we can't, you just, you're failing before you start. We have a critical issue, it does need to be addressed, and that is that Glen, Glen Street, there's no question about it. And when Katie built this for me and I looked at that, and it starts at auto delivery, and we talked about that the other day, Rick, and I appreciated your positive response to that, and go, and realizing where some of your sparts are that, that you need to address. And then you think about the fact that it runs all the way to the pool, and that's our park also. And so we're got, it's trying to get out to that, on bicycles, of course. So ignoring this critical issue that we have right now seems absolutely uh, unacceptable to me, and that's where we have to start, because that's a critical part. So I would like the street committee to contend, my favorite guys over here, street committee. And, uh, some of the folks then for this task force and other people that might be interested in this. We have to attack this. We have to get started, and we have to figure it out. And I'm not saying this is a next two weeks situation, but we've gotta look at it and work on it. These people were good enough to point it out, if, if not, uh, one of the main things that it, that came to us is These people were good enough to point it out, if, if not, uh, one of the main things that it, that came to us is. The situation we have where it's absolutely impossible, impassable to walk on in some of these areas. And yet another thing that this committee brought to my attention, here we bring all these international workers, how many of you got in town now? Hundred and eighty, hundred and fifty?
Well, hundred and eighty's. Our total peak season employment, and we have about eighty-five international.
Okay, and then you pile on that a few other businesses, you've got a hundred, hundred and twenty internationals who don't have a vehicle. Maybe they have a bike, maybe not, but they're mostly walking, we bring them to our town, we need them to work. And yet we don't even give them, uh, a safe place to get about town.
We have a bicycle program.
Yes, you do, yeah.
I think we have, I think we built sixty bicycles.
I mean, Joe has, okay, he's got fifty or sixty.
Bikes?
Yeah, no.
But I mean, international people might be more than what you think.
Well, you're always telling me that stuff, you say that more people drive out there and share it, and I'm gonna sit out there and count someday. You and me, we're gonna stand, sit out there, count people going in and out, sharing it.
But I wanna add too, like, I live on Glen Street, got a sidewalk in my, in front of my house. There is a lot of those foreigners that do not walk on the sidewalk, even if the sidewalk's there, and I'm sure you've seen it too.
Well.
Where are you hoping?
In the street?
In the street.
They walk on the side?
I don't walk on the sidewalks, I walk in the street too, if I'm walking. And, and if I'm a local, there's all kinds of streets, why would you walk down Glen Street anyway? I'd walk where there's no traffic.
Well, you're local and you can do that, but I'm worried.
I know.
Complain about sidewalks on Glen Street.
But aren't the bicycles supposed to be on the street? Yeah, it's supposed to be on the sidewalks.
No, but they're, they're, they're walking. In the street. Um, you know, but, and I'm not.
Most of the ones that walk on, come from the Fourth Avenue with apartments, or not Fourth Avenue.
Sixth.
Come by your place there, most of the foreign, international people are in the street.
Yeah, you know, they walk there and like if they go to Common Sense or the grocery store or whatever, that. Which I always thought was weird. And that I'm against whatever, I'm just, you know, pointing something.
Making that sound, and I'd see him, I don't know who, who that would be, but. Um, she was pushing a walker. And then I seen her later, I seen her three times, she pushed, and then she come from Prairie Village, all the way to the grocery store. And then I seen her coming back like an hour later.
With groceries?
Well, she had a little, she must have, I don't know.
Then another thing, cause it's, most of those, a lot of those kids on the bikes do not stop at the stops, I mean. Quite a few of them, just about hit it with the four wheel, they don't, they don't even look, they just go.
Oh, that's dangerous.
No, kids, you're talking about international workers, right, not our, please don't tell us our school kids are doing that.
I don't think hardly any school kids ride bikes anymore.
They all have cars.
Yeah.
Are their mom and dad hauling, is that what you're calling them?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it, you don't.
Because where we live, I mean, you got a good few who walks to school, and it's like, nobody. The, the past superintendent. Just hardly anybody.
Yeah, all the years that I took our kids to school, there was very few that rode bikes or.
I, I mean, there's a few, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, do I have the consensus of the council that we need to sit down and talk about this and make a plan? Do I have the consensus or not?
I agree that there, we got a sidewalk problem, but I guess I don't have a viable.
No.
I don't have a solution at this point.
That's right, so that's why I think the street committee needs to talk about this, come up with a recommendation and try to move forward.
And keep in contact with Danny and stuff too, to see if there are those.
And I think that would be, it's like a deal on this, there'd be grants, I'm sure it would probably be for the.
Bike path.
Main areas like Glen Street and South Boulevard, or to a school, or, you know, where the most.
Maybe like Sixth Avenue too, because there's, I mean, I hear the rest of that's on the interstate, and that's a higher traffic area. And that's nice of them too to point out, you know, our, our high traffic, uh, streets.
No, that's good.
I guess I worry about the financing for people that can't afford to. And then you said something about a twenty-year plan can the city afford? Cause then everybody's gonna say, hey, if you're like, I'm gonna charge you twenty dollars a year for one sidewalk.
It would be an individual contract, it has been used before, tell me about stone drying. What those people did themselves, they assessed themselves to do what, get a water system out there, or what?
Sewer system.
Sewer system.
Sewer system, how did that work?
Well, there again, I. My memory is not that, uh, to go back that many years, but they, all the, and I don't know what the figure was, it was. Five thousand to ten thousand, everybody out there had to throw a certain amount of money in, and the city paid, paid the rest. But they, they paid a pretty good amount, and they might have even done more than that, and they paid it over.
Over a period of time.
Option to pay all the time.
They could pay upfront if they could, if they didn't, they made an individual contract, and this is how we'll do it? So that's how you handle that, you don't.
Say they afford all that many, uh, individual contracts, so.
Okay, so we're only working like on a section at a time, we're not throwing all of this, you're not.
I don't know, like Garrett, what, do you have any idea what, if you take, uh. Seventy-five foot lot, I mean, I put a sidewalk in, yeah.
Everybody asked me to do that twice, and I haven't done it yet, but over, I don't know, it's like, I can't remember what a yard of concrete is, it's like two hundred and.
Well, I can, I've heard some, talked to like John Wickers or somebody that.
Yeah, I just.
So we have some concept that we can talk about it, but.
Yeah, cause it'd have to be at least four foot.
Right.
Uh, uh, four foot?
Yeah.
Because if, if we had to put any sidewalks in any, any place, I'd like to know. What's legal, I mean, would, right, do we, how far do we have to be from the curb?
Yeah, and then.
Twenty feet from the center, right?
Yeah, and there's, they, they want a boulevard.
Well, and if you have a corner lot, then I think we're always gonna wanna put the hand.
Oh, yeah, anytime you do anything, you have to put.
Right, so that's, there again, it would be, I presume that followed, like the ones that we've done. We've done those when they needed repair and we've just paid for them, right?
Right, when we did the street project and then.
It was all, yeah, part of the street cost.
So.
And let's not go with that company again. Cause when it rains, like where I live.
Don't even go there, Garrett said.
Straight across.
Handle this, uh.
It comes straight and hits my driveway and washes out my rocks, when we have a hard rain. It just comes straight over from parks, and hits right at my driveway and washes it away.
And I told the engineer that that's the way the water runs, and they said, well, the measurements we took, that it, it doesn't go there.
I didn't see when it rains, I mean, even like just a little bit, right, you can just see where it trails. And thereby Linda Hill, there's, do you know, there's that pool there every time I'll rain.
Okay, so, do I, we have come to a consensus that we need to address this? You're gonna find out some information, and then as a street committee, we're gonna get to work on this and move forward. Absolutely, okay, and addressing critical issues would be, makes sense to me that that's where you start. And it appears to be that that happens to be Glen Street, so, okay, anything else? Um, oh, okay, last thing is on four o'clock, at four o'clock, on. Okay, on four o'clock. Uh. June thirteen. At, no, at five o'clock, it's five o'clock here, we are part of the Western Dakota Regional Water System. Community meetings, they specifically asked, um, if they could hold it here. So it's, and it's in the paper, if you look at the current, there's also an ad there. It's June thirteenth, it'll begin at, uh, five o'clock, five to seven. This is bringing water to Western South Dakota from the river, and you heard a lot about this. Uh, Helene Duhamel has worked incessantly on this, uh, for the last year. And Cheryl Chapman is the executive director here, so please, as many of the council members that can.
The Western one?
Western Dakota Regional Water System, remember, we're members of that, we got on board with that right away. And, um, their meeting is going to be here in one of them, there's four, she's holding them, uh, around West River. And, uh, one of them here in Wal, starting at five o'clock on the thirteenth.
Here at the community.
Here at the community center, they've reserved this room, so it's important that we have decision makers and stakeholders. At that meeting, okay. That's all I have, uh, for that, okay, is there any other items for discussion that needs? No action will be taken, anybody else have comments?
Uh, Prairie Village, what, what happened with that, like with last talks, were they looking at selling it and?
Okay, the last time that I visited with Pettit County Housing about that, they wanna sell it. However, they have to get it appraised, then approved by HUD, it's about a two or three-year away situation. The good news about Prairie Village is that they did hire locally, uh, the custodial. And they have a local, um, lawn maintenance person in place. And as the sheriff, uh, told us, or the deputy sergeant told us tonight, um. The fact that we got the deputies of Pettit County Housing on the same page, now we have decreased the number of incidents that are going over there. Um, there's still some situations that have got to be dealt with, and I'm trying to move forward with them. But after they had that huge colossal apartment incident in Rapid City, they have been kind of like swamped.
Yeah.
So, was there something in particular that?
Just like, there'd be any way of speed up that process.
Of getting it sold?
Yeah.
Or bought?
Yeah, and I don't know, like.
Did you deal with federal government?
It's HUD.
It's, yeah.
H U D, HUD.
It's at their page.
Yeah, but, yeah, just wait and see, basically.
Yeah, that executive director wants to sell it, he, he wants it gone, his board wants it gone, but the process.
Yeah.
The process, but I will keep indicating to him that. That's okay with us, is to get, get that done, so. And then it would be, you'd be, if that was an individual owner, then you could control the. Population there, or the residents, so that would be, uh. Something that would be a good thing, okay, any other thoughts on that?
Thank you.
Okay, uh.
I have a question, Mary, on that, so if it gets bought by a private owner, will they lose their?
No, that's, oh, I'm sorry.
You probably knew what I was gonna ask, but I just know that there are elderly and some individuals there that are on a controlled rent situation. Will they lose that?
See, that's what the, what, uh, Pettit County Hou- Housing wants to get in the business of doing. Is giving those people a voucher, here's a voucher of for X number of dollars based on your income. Now you turn around and give it to this individual that owns your building.
Okay.
Now you would not be to control, you know, the rate of that apartment, so if these guys give you a voucher for four hundred dollars. You're still gonna have to, that el- that person would have to come up with the difference, whatever that would be, but.
So potentially though, if it was sold to a private person, you would have no idea, they might.
Right.
Or different plan. Right, I mean, I know that there are people that live there that you wish were there, but we, there's also a lot of people that live there that are. Elderly and family that we don't want that to happen to, I just, I just was curious how that.
Yeah, but that, actually, uh, Pettit County Housing is selling other buildings in Rapid City.
Okay.
Get out of being in that business, even though Wal was one of the very first ones, when you go back and look at the histories. Wal was one of the first ones that was put in right after the flood, so it's, yeah.
When did the Pettit County Housing take it over though? They didn't start it.
Actually, they did, that was interesting that I found out too, when I started trying to get my head wrapped around this predicament, so.
Yeah, that surprised me, that again, when it was very new, there was mainly our older citizens.
Yeah. Okay, so any other items for discussion? Okay, next city council will be June twentieth at six thirty. Is there any need for an executive session tonight? Here and seeing none, is there, um, any, is there any other business that needs to come? Uh, before the council tonight, okay, meeting adjourned.
These permits were on the.